From May of 2019, it has a termination clause in there, which this current proposed also has. And it's about the property would be returned back to the county only if and when Stacoa Valley Center ceased to be a nonprofit. Typically municipalities lease to nonprofit organizations, whatever their mission may be, to serve the community and the purpose of a long-term lease is to prop up that nonprofit so it can do service to the community. So that is still in at the towards the end. But then now there is another clause, termination clause, that has been added that there would be a 30-day termination clause with or without reason. We are here to discuss why there's this new termination clause, what is the purpose of that? But I wanted to tell you what kind of impact that would have on our operations. And as Rick mentioned, it would basically dissolve Stacoa Valley Center. So right now, we are grant funded, we're funded through private donations, we work with the county on some of our projects, and we appreciate the past support and especially the new roof. I think every time that I see any of y'all, I've been still echoing the thanks for that because it really protected what we have done on the inside of the main building. But these proposed changes, especially the 30-day termination clause, would eliminate our financial ability to operate. We would not be able to apply for long-term grants or provide long-term programming, including after-school, JAM, Junior Appalachian Musicians, our food distribution, and our senior services. And existing grant funds that we've been awarded are typically for at least a year, our fiscal year runs the same as yours from July 1st through June 30th. We have existing grants to start renovation on the gymnasium, and we would have to return those funds. I mean, our grant holders understand our lease agreement with the county and that we're going to be there for a while. So we would have to return that money. I met yesterday with a resident of Lake Santitla, who we have a lot of donors from Lake Santitla, and he is wanting to donate a lot worth $80,000 to the center. I had to tell him, you know, our lease agreement, the proposed changes to the agreed upon lease is out of the air, you know, so we may lose that dimension. We also employ 13 people in the county. We have three full-time and 10 part-time people. We serve typically before the virus, at least 40 to 50 kids in our after-school program. We have received grant funding from the National Endowment for the Arts for the next two years as part of the CARES Act. We were awarded a grant of $50,000, part of which is for payroll and utilities and insurance so that we, when it is time to open up more, then we can do that and be able to pay our employees close to full pay. We are only one of 21 arts agencies in all of North Carolina to get that grant from the NDA, National Endowment for the Arts. And it's not because of grant writing ability, it is because we have a reputation for spending our funds in a frugal manner. And as you can understand, you know, our revenue has been completely eliminated. We've not been able to have any program. We have been able to have some small donations. I don't know what our fall fundraising campaign will look like, but we have been able to keep up with food distribution where we actually buy bulk food from the Anna Food Bank and then we distribute that for free to the community. And then the clause about Grand County Government using the facilities at any time for any necessarily being governmental purpose is not doable for us either because then what if we have events planned or we have, you know, after-school programming? We have been from the very beginning back in May 28th, when we met with Becky and the ADA and the Board of Directors, Tami Hawaway, been willing to have court or whatever else it is that the county needs. I mean, we've always been open to that. We've subleased to Grand County Sheriff's Office. We've also had that, I can't remember the operation, it was the, there was a, we had Congressman here and we had that member, but we had that meeting about the naming issues. We've always been open to hosting Grand County Government events and, you know, purpose, whatever it is that is needed. And as Rick stated, it is a showplace and it is big enough where we can accommodate court or other necessary governmental functions. I don't think that at all have we not been willing to accommodate that, and we still are. But what we feel is that this newly proposed changes to the lease agreement will completely hinder our operations and our funding, and we won't be able to offer those programs that are so essential to the community. We've been having an artist festival, this will be our 24th annual artist festival. It's our 21st year, 22nd year of having an after-school program. It's our 19th year of offering a Junior Appalachian Musicians program. I mean, we are, you know, successful in what we're doing as a nonprofit and serving the community, and we would like to continue that. As far as the insurance, we did meet with the Superior Court Judge and Beth was there from the Health Department, we had the sheriff and the bailiff, we had, there was about 10 of us that did walk through at the center, and it does seem that it is a viable option that the court could approve. Now, they have had to, my understanding is, request to move the court from Rowley or from Robbinsville, they had to make a request to Rowley because the court in North Carolina is supposed to be situated in the county seat. So I don't know if that approval has been given yet, but we did have discussion during the walkthrough about that. Also there, we are on the North Carolina Study List of Historic Places. That is something from our strategic planning meeting this past March, early March before the world changed, that we are pursuing on the National, the National Historic Registry. And then Rick mentioned the insurance, so we have been in touch with, typically if we sublease or have a use or rental agreement with any body, it doesn't, whether it's Grand County Government, or it's for a wedding, or it's for a birthday party, or whatever use of the facilities, we do have contracts ready to go, you know, you fill in the base and, you know, then the, what the agreed upon amount is. We have set lease rates, rental rates, which we had given to Becky back in May, and that's where the $14,000 came from, if you were wondering about that number. That's just, that is what we do typically for anyone. And of course, we were willing to negotiate that down and we did get to a $700 a day figure, which would basically be reimbursing reasonable expenses. So, but our insurance and what we require if someone is to have an event like that at the center, that they provide liability insurance. So basically, they would name us as insured, so they, it's very inexpensive. But I do understand from our carrier, we carry all the liability for the center and it would not cover having court. Becky is aware of that and that's something that y'all have to consider. I don't know, you know, how that works.
I contacted our agent and she seemed to feel like she's going to clarify and verify with our carrier that it would be covered under our overarching law building umbrella insurance, especially if you were to leave alone the building. So it's listed as part of our overall assets, so I think we're good there. I'm still waiting to hear the final word from her. I think we're good.
Okay. Well, and the liability insurance has always been carried by the center, which is spelled out in the existing lease. So, well, those are some questions as far as if Rowley approves it, but we are very willing to, you know, in any service that the county needs, we just don't feel that it needs, we need to reinvent the wheel and change our lease at this late date when it's already been approved. It all approved in May of 2019, and it was published in June. And we do these kind of agreements all the time for all kinds of purposes, and we're willing to do that. So if you have any questions that we, about our operations or the impact of the proposed these changes to the operations.
Just three and four, that's the two concerning, just those two?
Those are the most concerning. The other one has to do with the utilities, but again, that would be something that would be spelled out in a lease agreement, you know, a sublease or rental contract or special use. And we would say, because one of the things that could change is, like, we gave those reasonable expenses per August because that's when we were told that they needed to have Superior Court, well, court got suspended again, and that could happen for the November file that's, you know, coming up. We don't, we're not in control of that. So the lost gallery revenue for August will be different from November, and then the gallery is closed in January, February, so then it wouldn't cost the county any lost revenue because the gallery is already closed. So it's also if, if, you know, the proposed changes to the lease doesn't take into account that that could save the county even more money if we just do a use agreement, which is something we've done for 20 something years. And sometimes it's just been a verbal agreement between the county manager as, like, for the meeting we had about the naming issue.
When you, when you talk about the termination clause, I've never seen a lease that I could recall that didn't have some type of termination clause in.
Well, this, the proposed one has two. It has the one at towards the end where it talks about, which was in our existing lease, it's been in both leases that we've had with the county, which talks about if we, Stacoa Valley Center ceases to be a nonprofit, then the property would go back to the county. And that's the typical way that municipalities deal with nonprofits as far as long-term leases. And then now there is, under the section about the use for court or other being purposes, then now there's a new 30-day with or without reason clause, and that's the one that hinders our operations and ability to provide services to the community.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask you a question. If you were a, a, if you were a, if you were an agency that provided rent equity to another organization, and you wanted to invest in that property and that mission, would you provide an FME knowledge to a agency that could no longer, that might not be there in 30 days with or without reason?
Well, I understand that gives you a reason to pause.
It totally does, but what operation is?
Again, there, to me at least, there has to be some sort of termination clause, it doesn't have to be as what is written in this, but I could see, you know, 10 years down the road, how many of us are still going to be on this board? I doubt that I'm going to be as county commissioner, I don't know if some of y'all may wear well to be on that board up there, but you could have a group of people coming in over there that after y'all leave, that are just a train wreck. And, you know, it could happen, it's not soon for a fix to think that could happen. And the same thing could happen with the board commissioners, you could have a group of commissioners that are just an absolute train wreck. So I understand the concern, but, so, in order for me to be comfortable with it, and I'm not speaking for anybody else on this board, there has to be some way for us to resolve this relationship if and when the need arises, whether it's a year from now or 15 years from now. So, I mean, if you were leasing a building from Joe Blow's apartment rentals, you would have some sort of termination clause in there. So what I guess, what I'm asking you is, what is a termination clause that you can live with?
I think the one that's in the existing lease.
Well, if you point that out to me, I'm much as said, I don't know what.
I don't think it's clause 15 on the, on the draft.
Page what?
It's page 6 of 9 on the draft, clause 15.
Well, that's based on Stacoa Center ceasing to exist, which again, that could happen a year from now, or that could happen 10 years from now, that just basically surrenders the property back to the county. There has to be some termination clause that allows sensible people to say, okay, this is it, we're, we're just not going to do that anymore. So if you, you know, that's what I want personally in any lease, and I think the renters would, would accept that.
I think something along, this is, you know, we're here just going out of, right?
Yeah.
Right, a couple solutions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, something along the lines that if the property ever ceases to fulfill its mission then, or its programming, or, I don't know the exact coverage, that would be a legitimate reason to terminate.
Yeah.
You know, but to say.
Can, can the gentleman talk into a microphone, please?
He can talk into the microphone.
And who am I talking to?
This is her, yeah.
Let me see if this is on first.
It's on the top, it's on the top screen.
His name? William Coward, this is Rick Davis. I'm the.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm the chair of the Stacoa Valley Center. My question was to Chairman Wiggins was that some type of terminology about if the center ceases to fulfill its mission as stated or as approved, then that would appear to me to be a mal-sport or a mission. But to say, okay, have you got 30 days with or without clause, that's just really unacceptable, I guess, would be a great word for it. With or without reason? Whoa. I mean, that'd be like me throwing out a dinner of mine for no reason at all. You're out.
I think the other thing that we're trying to understand, and Chairman Wiggins, I think I understand what you're trying to say because people do come and people do go. Right now, the center has successful operations, you know, we've had a little setback with the virus, but we're starting to work on our after-school programming and what we can do and when we can reopen.
Good.
When we can reopen more fully. I do understand that, but I guess what we're trying to understand is what has changed since you all, which you all were on the board last May? What has changed that either we have done or haven't done that would all of a sudden necessitate these changes? Because if it's just a matter of holding court, there is a legal way that we can still do that. But, I mean, like Rick said, I mean, we can't operate not knowing if in 30 days, we have to leave the premises. And the other thing is that it would take a lot longer than 30 days to vacate those premises. I just think that that's unnecessary. I don't think that there's anything that we have done that, you know, since May of last year, when you all voted and agreed unanimously and it was already published, that, you know, we now need to change that. It might be, I think I saw it in some of Becky's correspondence, that the idea of one of you sitting on our Board of Directors, we would be fine with that, we would actually welcome that because I think a lot of times, it's misunderstood what actually we do as Stacoa Valley Center, how much money we have, what grants we have, you know, so we would definitely be willing, that way, there could be a county commissioner that could oversee operations. We meet monthly, I mean, I'm sure you don't need another meeting, but, you know, we would be glad to furnish you with whatever financial documents. I mean, we give our 990 tax return every year to Becky and, you know, we don't have an audit because we can't afford to have an annual audit. You know, we never carry more than 25, $35,000 of our own money. It's all passed through from grants for programs. You know, we get $60,000 a year for the after-school program. We run the program, they reimburse us, we pay bills. So we've never, I mean, we're, you know, we're not rolling the dough over there, and I think that's another common misperception, not just with the commission, but at the county as a whole. Or that we can write a grant for whatever our needs are, and that's just not true. I mean, our needs are operating support, that's why we come before you every year and request operating support because there are not many grants out there for utilities and insurance and the things that we need to operate 24,000 square feet of facilities and grounds. So, you know, we have to use our own funds for that. And most of those funds that are unrestricted are from donations, and those donations are from community members in Grand County. They may be seasonal residents, some of them, they may be long-term, gone to school, born raised, gone to school at Stacoa, and we appreciate those. But we can't operate under the terms that are being proposed. So if we can come to, maybe it isn't there, there's, you know, more member that sits on our board. I, I do understand where you're coming from, but we would just like to know what's changed since last May that would necessitate these changes to the lease.
I don't think that as far as Stacoa Center and its board of directors, I don't think you've done anything that is, is causing these changes to come about. I think, I think what happened is this court situation came up and we as a board saw the need to ensure that a facility that is owned by the county, when and if the county ever needed to use that facility, that it would be made available to the county for whatever need arose that was dictating that the county had to have use of a facility somewhere, and in this instance, it's Stacoa Center. That is the only motivation I'm aware of that would cause us to do anything different. I'm not sure where the 30-day termination language came from, but.
Do you know, Becky, where that language came from?
I think there was some discussion about.
Y'all were in meetings and I don't know where it came from personally.
There was only one meeting, Connie, there was no multiple meetings.
Okay, well, whatever was, it was the emails, I guess.
Everything else has been discussed here in these meetings and all the emails have been shared at one time or another.
Mr. Chairman, on your, on your comment there about the use of the facility, of course it's the used facility, and there is no, there is no, not any type of impulse that I'm aware of from the executive director, when in the board of directors that would discourage that, and that we would welcome the use of the facility by the county, within reason. I mean, you couldn't tell us why we need to, we have problems going on, we, you need making, because we can, you know, but, you know, within reason, we can, we need.
Well, my, my stance has not changed since the meeting that we had over there at the center. I think property, when it's, when it can be made available, should be available or should be, the county should have access to it. If you have programs going on at the same time, and I think the county should take that into consideration. If, you know, I, the only use that I can foresee the county ever having over there is a court situation. I can't think of anything else. And I sort of believe myself, don't want Grand County Government involved in operating Stacoa Valley Center. We have enough to deal with without dealing with that. So that, that's been my stance from the beginning, is that we ought to have access to it. We have to take into consideration the programs that y'all have over there, and in a situation where it is court and there was no other option, then I think we should be able to come to you and say, look, you're going to, we want to get a toast pump here, programs for a week, or stop them for a week on toast pump, so that we can have this Stacoa Valley used for court. Now, that's my opinion from day one.
Well, I think we can accommodate that through a special use agreement each time that we do it. I mean, at the last regular meeting, I mentioned that at the beginning, when everything shut down, I would happen to think that Stacoa Valley Center might have to be used as a hospital, and that's God's honest truth. And it still could be, we don't know. We're prepared for whatever purpose, but I think as those things come up, would be more prudent than to just put a blanket clause in the lease that would handicap our ability to operate.
Well, again, 10 years from now, you may not be there, none of you may be there, we may not be here. So I think it is using a certain amount of foresight to have language in there so that another board of directors at Stacoa could not say, whoa, no, 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 you can't do that.
Well, that's why.
You can't say, yeah, we've got that, you need to read your lease because we've got that in the lease.
Well, and that's why.
It's just a matter of protecting our ability to use it if and when the need ever arises.
And I'm sorry for interrupting, but that's what the publication noticed, that the public is about, to spell out what the use is offered. So like, if there's another board and another executive director, those terms, the lease use terms are spelled out in the lease and also to the public notice. Like, we couldn't have, you know, a topless biker event over there because it's, the county could shut it down. You know, I mean, we have to stick to those terms that we agree to. So no matter who is there on the board of directors or as the executive director, that's why it says for educational purpose, for arts purpose, aligned with our mission. So there is some recourse already in the existing lease.
Mr. Chairman?
Joy, please.
Bill Prater, I'm the, probably the newest, I'm sure I am, member of the board of directors of Stacoa Valley. It seems to me that what's happened here is a leverage play. My first meeting was when it was asked to have court, and we considered that. The second meeting that we had was the terms of our original lease that was agreed to had now been added to with these phrases, which concern me, 30 days removal with or without cause. That's extremely harsh, and that gives a tremendous amount of leverage to you, the commissioners. More so, it, it, it's a mistrust. What, what is the board of commissioners trying to do? Do they have something in the back of their minds? Do they have something in the back of their minds that down the road, maybe they've been offered some money or, you know, whatever, we'll, we'll take this off of your hands at a high price or whatever. We can't do it right now, but five years down the... I've been a director at many states and many different organizations over the years. I've seen a lot of that sort of thing. So it brings suspicion to my mind and question to my mind, why in the world would that be added just before signing?
For me as a second Commissioner, representing the people of Graham County, we're letting Staco Valley Center have that building for adoption. We're in terms that have turned out and paid rent to our court. That building belongs to the people of Graham County, not just the valley. So there's a little bit of the reason, so the Valley Center did not tell us that you can't have court over there. That's the way I feel about it.
Okay, and, and I understand that, but what reason, what gave anyone the reason that this Board or any Board would do that when they already have a lease and have operated for the last, how many years, under that lease without cause? There's got to be a reason and maybe it is leverage. Maybe there was, maybe it's, it's leverage to say, hey, we just want you to know that you don't have control of that property and whenever we say jump, you say how high, because we own it and we're doing the work for the people. Disregard anyone else. Like I say, I've seen it all in my seventy-seven years around this country on, on working with governments and private. I've been a businessman for years and nonprofits. So my concern is the moral aspect of this.
I'm not going to explain for everybody here, but I'd like to make sure that you understand, there's no ill will or motive for any of that. Like Dale said, I'm not exactly sure when the thirty days come into, to, to this lease. I do know that we discussed, because of the court ensuring our interest and y'all's interest for the future, as things change, is there, I wonder if there's a way to put together a, a use agreement between the county and Staco Valley Center that's not a special use agreement, that's not a temporary use agreement, that, that we can use language like urgent, emergency, you know, something, something that's, that we can holler great that's a necessity, that would be long-term instead of a temporary special use agreement. Could we come forward, come to somewhere, because we want to protect the county's interests just like, and we want to protect Staco's interests. And it's, it was more trying to look past the end of our nose than do something shady. I can assure you that, that's not the case at all. That's to go, just to make sure that long-term that applies to you.
Well, I don't see any reason why we can't do with an agreement long-term. And at the last regular meeting, I think I even mentioned that we, if the Board of County Commission would honor their vote from May of 2019 and sign the lease that was agreed upon, we could even do a lease amendment, which would address the use of the county, you know, to use the facilities in emergencies, in emergency manner, in whatever, and that we would set aside those programs. Yes, we can do that too. You know, we just have operated over the past twenty-some-odd years using sub-lease agreements, which is in clause ten of the existing lease, and that doesn't matter if it's to the public or the Commissioner, you know, considering Graham County. And I think maybe I hear from Mr. Eller, there might be, I understand, you know, your job is to look out for the, all of us residents of Graham County and there might be some issue with the cost that we were proposing, but I wanted to let you know, those are just costs that, you know, we're responsible for all utility and we're responsible for everything there except the property insurance. So, you know, if we have functions there, all of those and, and the utilities and staffing is all in our rental rate sheet, which was the original fourteen thousand dollars, so we have gotten that down to seven hundred dollars. And as I mentioned, if we have to close all of our operations, like the gallery, we would lose that revenue. So I think we would also need something in there to say, you know, all of those terms as well. And that way, there doesn't have to be a change in the lease that you approve, we can do either a use agreement for that period of twenty-five years even. I, I mean, so that like Dale said, if there's some y'all who's that come over on the Board of SDC that want to take that in a different direction, I think the county is already protected and we could even do language like that. I think that for us, it's just taken us off guard because we feel like it was an administrative thing that didn't happen, which was just the actual signing of a lease. And that should have happened within ten days of the publication of the paper, that was in the paper, because that's what was published as intended. But you do have recourse if we don't stick to our mission as Staco Valley Center. So I don't see any reason that Board members would you, I, I think that would be fine.
Mr. Chairman, this is a personal comment, not a comment as a Board Chairman. I trust you guys.
I do too.
And I do not in any way think there's any type of ulterior motive or anything like that from your side. I do not. And I've known Bruce Duff all my life and that's, that has never been revived. I think that, I think that we can come to an agreement with language that would work for both of us. It's that thirty days, Chairman, that, that is for no reason, that is just, it would, it would cost us to see, it would cost the center emergencies.
Graham County would not honor any more grants to the center. Well, we can't even apply for grants. I mean, it just completely would decap our operations.
May I, may I say, and, and segue off of what Rick said, I don't know any, but I've been on a lot of boards and I've been in a lot of corporations and I've done a lot of business. And so that's where I'm coming from. I've seen a lot. I don't know you. I'm not, I'm not saying that you're perfect. I'm surely not saying I'm perfect. I just have been around the block. I didn't fall off the turnip truck yesterday. And when I see language put in a contract like that, thirty days with or without cause, there comes a big exclamation point right there. What is going on? And none of us knew about it until we saw the head issue.
I think it's also, as always, a perception thing. I, I mean, you know, if we're not, we're not all in constant communication. I mean, we really only ever address the Board of County Commission at budget time and then last year for this lease, we hardly ever, you know, have a lot of needs sometimes, like when we were working on the tourism project or the master plan for the center, we needed Job to adopt the plan so we could build the outdoor restroom and we could start working on the playground and now we're working on the Veterans Memorial. You know, there are times that we, but typically, you know, we, we kind of just do our operations and don't, you know, try to, you know, but I think there is some misperception and especially like with our new Board members, but we've had the working relationship even back when our founding executive director was there. And I think that I'm probably a little more persistent in asking the county to support Staco Valley Center because I know what an asset it is to all members of the county and to our tourists. So I think sometimes there are some misperceptions and it was not communicated in a way we feel that, you know, it was just emailed to us at the last regular meeting and then we were like, well, what in the world, why is this being changed? So, Mr. Nellis, I totally agree. I think that we can all live with the lease that we have and that we can do an agreement if you want to do it for the twenty-five years on urgent, emergency, how it works with language, then let's get some of that proposed and out there. But the clock is ticking on, we have until October eleventh when this lease expires and that's a sense of urgency we have because right now we can't, you know, make plans for that. I mean, you know, we're going to start working on after-school, we need to know we're going to have facilities and that you're going to honor your vote for the existing lease.
The idea of the Commissioner of the Board, what is that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
One of the things is, I think, you know, consensus is, you know, section four is a little bit, needs to be revised and I think that's, you know, consensus of both Boards.
Why is it section four?
The termination.
Consensus means that both agree. That, you know, that verbiage just needs to be rectified. You know, Commissioner Wiggins was, you know, stating, you know, there still needs to be a clause in our work, it protects both, you know, you know, future endeavors happen. One of the things is, you know, I was on the first Board that was developed for Staco Valley Center. I was part of the, the crew that hired this, you know, land shield. And Dale and I were part of, and Rick was part of it as well, getting this property put into the county name from the school system. We had a little bit of discrepancy on that, but we worked it out, we were able to get that done. And, and I don't think any Board that, you know, in the past and I hope in the future wants to see anything done to the, the center of the board. I know there's been some, you know, communication going back and forth and, and I just think, you know, just the conception of it is, you know, maybe got to handle, but, but the, truly, you know, I feel like this Board, you know, has no animosity against anybody in there and, and personally, you know, I live there, so I don't, you know, I think it's the greatest thing in the world. But, you know, in the part where the, the county is reserving the right to use the facility is, you know, sometimes there's emergency, things that we have to do, have emergency needs, or even if a grant is applied for, that section of the county is best in that section of where people can come and view their point of view instead of having it over here. Because, you know, how many people's going to travel over here just to hear something about, you're not going to have that meeting. But if you have that, that, you know, that path where, you know, if you have a public meeting or something, it can actually be done. That way it just makes it a little bit easier for the public and also for the county as well. And, and I think that's where, you know, we were trying to get that across is where, you know, if the county has to use the building, it can use the building, you know, for those reasons, not just to go over and just say, we want you to shut everything down. We just want, you know, just to be able to have the access if we need to. And, and I think that's, you know, what our, you know, our motive was is, is, you know, in case the county has to have something to do with it.
Well, Mr. Cuddy, I appreciate that and I can tell you, there has not been one time that the county has needed to use our facilities that they, that you've been told about. I mean, we, we have used, I mean, y'all had Board of County Commission meeting there once, not this specific court, but also, as I'm in, I can't remember, what was that operation?
I'm not sure.
But anyway, and then again with the Sheriff's Office, you know, I mean, we, we use that space so they have a place to go to the bathroom and to use the phone and, you know, whatever they need to do because of the, the mountain, you know, the distance it is. And just like we've had the NCDOT public meetings over there about four-door K, we posted a lot of governmental type functions there and...
ARC.
Big Appalachian Regional Commission, you know, they have been funders of ours. We have lots of celebrations with politicians too and other things. So, you know, there's just never been a time that we're not willing to do that. And especially, I think our thing too is just having, you know, whatever that reasonable notice is, because we would, like if we had after-school going on when court is proposed, we would have to notify the parents that for these ten days or whatever, there will be no after-school. And since the court is delayed, you know, suspended right now and, you know, who knows what will happen with the November, but there's also, you know, the clerk of the court has to give notice for the jurors within thirty days before the date of the court. So that should give us plenty of time as well to be able to work on those terms.
And this is just a draft, this is not, this is a draft. And a draft means it can be changed.
Mr. Chairman, I think my concern was the thirty days. That, that terminology and that, just, and I mean, I'm a new Board member, but that really ruined, you know, lots of law. So if it's a draft, not by a sense of, I don't know.
That might be a good place to insert the verbiage that says if, if the center does not follow the mission or like Rick, you were saying, any number of legitimate causes. So that might be recorded to that effect and make it palatable to everybody.
Which was in the original reading. That, or that was in the original reading.
Well, I think that's reasonable.
Why she say that, that's reasonable.
Well, I think maybe the other thing too, Sarah, that what you're saying is, it could be a little more detailed. I mean, I think even, you know...
Well, cause if, if you put language in there that it can be terminated for cause, that comes down to a definition. My definition of cause could be different from Rick's, but, you know, I think the language can be developed that's agreeable to all of us. I didn't get your last name, did you say?
Prather, P-R-A-T-H-E-R.
Prather.
Prather.
Prather, okay. To the best of my knowledge, there's only one person in Graham County that has been working for the Staco Schools, Staco Center any longer than I am and that would be more than helpful. And we started on this in nineteen ninety-three. That's how long I've been a supporter and a proponent of everything that is being done over at Staco Valley Center. So in response to your comment, there, there is no ulterior motive. Could we have chosen better language? I'm going to say yes, we could have. But there, there's no leverage. I don't want Graham County to try to run that property over there and that would be, you know, if y'all leave, what are we going to do with it? You know what I mean? It's just, it just doesn't make sense. So...
Well, I think, I think the language, thirty days with or without cause, and, and we don't know how it got in there.
Let's try to find the cause and, you know, the, the lease itself was approved in May. The only technical side of that that hasn't been done is, I don't know if all five Board Commissioners have to sign it or if the Chairman has to sign it.
Chairman, Chairman, we decided to sign it.
I mean, that, that's the only thing that hasn't been done, that's been voted on, approved, you know, I think, and Jay could clarify that, but, you know, in a technical sense, the lease is already done. What we're doing and unfortunately is we're reacting. We're reacting to a situation that none of us ever imagined would happen. And... And we saw, or at least I think we saw, a situation that needed some clarification so that we could ensure that in these most extreme situations, that Gray Oak County government would have access to the facility if we needed it. That's all that's going on here, there's no, you know, no conspiracy that I'm aware of to, to try to cause St. Cola Center to cease operations. You know, I love the music, I love the after school, I love the jam program, I've had nieces and nephews that participate in all of it, so I'm, I'm on board, I've always been on board with St. Cola, and I don't expect I'm going to change. So, if this board, if the Board of Commissioners is agreeable, then we will ask our county attorney to develop language for that particular item number four to state causes for termination.
Mr. Chairman, may we provide input into that, may we provide our input into the question that you're going to give to the county attorneys, that, that y'all come up with cause, that we also can provide input?
I don't have a problem with it.
That's a good idea, I'd be open to that.
I think, I think overall, we would come up with a better understanding of what our needs are and what the county needs are, if we both of us collaborating on that change.
I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I speak? This is Jay Coward.
Go ahead, please.
I'll be happy to work with anybody on better language that we could put into the lease, so I'm available to work on that with commissioners, with members of this board. If we can set up a time, please, we can sit down at a table and come up with some stuff and present it to you that I think would be satisfactory to both sides.
Okay. That sounds good to me. So we'll modify number four, anything else that y'all would like?
Well, I think in the, the modification, the other new item that, that regards to utilities, Jake, what number was that at? I'm sorry, I forgot. The last one.
The one about using it or the one about hiding?
The last one about the utilities.
Wait, was it number seven?
Is that number seven, Becky?
Right, and then Rick, we're in mercy for St. Cola Valley Center, we're gonna use one of the, that's the last one.
Yeah, I think that should be combined in with number four, where we're actually talking about use by Grand County Government, then that language should all be together in number four, so then we can say, you know, it's possible.
I don't think number seven has anything to do with, I'm sorry, or number four.
And would that be?
That's, that's just the typical lease language that you'll bear the expenses of what we will pay you like.
No, no, no.
Yeah, that's not it. Number seven addresses what we would reimburse, if we're using the facility. So my question would be, is this something that's going to be pulled out, and it's, you know, if board agrees to going and using the use agreement, a long-term use agreement, would that be made, would it be pulled out into that agreement?
I think it would be combined with number four, where we're actually talking about Grand County Government using the facilities, because if we're talking about using them, then what would be reimbursed?
That would be number three.
Number three.
I think that's what you're thinking.
Combined with number three.
Yeah, it's always their right to use, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, four is the termination.
Number seven says that St. Cola will pay the utilities, and that Gray Oak County agrees to reimburse St. Cola Valley Center for any utilities used while Gray Oak County occupies the center.
Right, and I'm saying that should be combined with number three, where we talk about Grand County using the facilities. And we are going to have to expand that, as I mentioned, there will be times where it will be cheaper, you know, and, and I do think that that's one reason if we did a long-term use agreement separate from the lease, we can spell that out, you know.
So could we, if, if that part stays in the lease, could it just basically say, pursue it to the long-term use agreement, and that gives that flexibility? So that if, like you were saying, the, the, um, um, flexoration in the revenue piece of what we discussed back in, one of the board meetings we had in June, that would provide that flexibility if in January, February, you're closed, your Dallas closed, you have no revenue. And if, if you basically say, pursue it to a long-term use agreement, then at least it references back to the lease, if you guys, if the board, if you decide to go with the use.
That's kind of Becky, what you and I had talked about when we had the walkthrough. I think that we're willing to have whatever we need to do for the county at the center in a long-term use agreement. You know, our kind of anxiety comes with, with not having to sign a lease, and then it being able to plan those programs. And so I think that would be a good idea, to just put that, to make those separate
I think it's better if we put as much language into the lease as we can, so that a year from now, we're not having to vote on something else, or two years from now, we're not having to vote on something else, let's spell it out, put it in the lease, sign it one time, and be done.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that absolutely. I think having a separate document will, will make it confusing and difficult to enforce. I think because of a long-term lease, a law has to be reported in registered deeds, because it's greater than three years' length. So that's the document that you're going to be able to go to, and who knows what will happen to a long-term use agreement? If you incorporate that into the lease, then you've got it fixed, where you can find it, and you know what it's for, and future boards won't have to quibble about long-term lease agreement we're talking about. And if you need to change it, you can always amend the lease agreement itself, it's not like it's written stone, if you need to change something about the use later on, you can do that, record the amendment to the lease. So it doesn't make it any more flexible, add another document, I think it just makes it more concrete. We can put the language that both sides want in it in the lease. I agree with the chairman.
All right, so let's do this. You guys put your thing together that, that you want, as far as that, what was that item number four? Let's get that emailed over to our attorney and to the board members. And that's it, communicate until we get it, get this ironed out. Jay, I've got a question for you. You can hear me.
I'm muted now.
You can hear me, okay.
Yes.
The lease as adopted in May of twenty nineteen by this board in unanimous vote, is that an enforceable lease even though the document hasn't been signed?
It, it's really not, I mean, because what you've agreed to do is you've agreed to enter into the lease with St. Cola Valley Center, however, you haven't agreed to the terms. And the terms of any lease have to be in writing, and the lease has to be signed by both parties.
Okay.
Unrecorded to be enforceable, and it has to be recorded. So, signed and unrecorded, it's not a renewal of the lease. The lease will die, uh, a natural dead, and there will be no lease until we have a new lease signed by the parties unrecorded.
Okay.
So Jay, I have one question too. Does, once we get this all finalized, if everybody agrees on what or cause is, and it's written into the document, does the publication need to be printed again?
Do it hurt? Which is to say, I don't know exactly, but it won't hurt, go ahead and vote.
Well, you're, yeah, is there will be need to be voted on again by County Commission and public notice given?
All right, we, we have a meeting next Tuesday, I think it's September the eighth, and we have a meeting the following Tuesday.
DSS is the eighth, I believe. I think the DSS, uh, meeting is the eighth, which it's the board.
And the legislature meeting on the fifteenth, our regular scheduled meeting on the fifteenth.
If, if you remember, Mr. Chairman, on the eighth, the issue of Miller versus Graham Counties, the argument in Cherokee County, so I'm not sure of it, attend on, and I would prefer the fifteenth if that's possible.
So by at least the fifteenth, we should have this ironed out, that's two weeks.
Be ready to publish.
If we're all in agreement.
Okay, so my understanding is that we're to email between the county's attorney and all of the board members, County Commission, board members, and our board members, until we can come to an agreement on number four.
We need to have a meeting.
Or we need to have, you know.
But we have to have a meeting outside of the eighth or the fifteenth, then I'll call for a special meeting.
Or just, you know, it's separate. We can get it ironed out, make a meeting.
We could, we could get on, we could, we could set up a meeting, they, they call in any day with, with Mr. Coward and, and, I mean, we had a call in today with a couple commissioners on it, so we had a whole call-in discussion. It is not a problem, we, you know, we don't make decisions, as long as we aren't making decisions, we can have conversations. Is there anything else that we could consider today?
I don't think so, is there anything else we can consider?
All right, well, I think we made progress, I hope we have.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Am I got anything they need to add before we leave? I'll take that as another, thank y'all for coming.
Let's keep the communication going, okay?
Anything else for us today? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
And thank you.